Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council meeting for February 26, 2025. Look around, I see that everyone is here, so we do have a quorum. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short invocation. Stand up with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The invocation is going to be delivered by John Blile, our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you pray with me? Our Father in Heaven, we come to unite, thanking you for the blessings that you give us. We know that all good and perfect gifts come from you above. We also know, Father, that you ordain all the governments, the governing authorities, and we ask tonight that you would be here, present with us. I ask that you would give the City Council your wisdom and knowledge as they make decisions to benefit all citizens here in the city of Shenandoah, also the citizens of Tamina. I ask for travel mercies as we go home later, watch over our families while we're gone, and pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to item number five, Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters related to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address councilmen, give their name before sharing their comments. Do we have anyone here to speak? No one? Boy, do I feel protected this evening. Look at the lineup back there. Welcome all. We're going to make a slight adjustment to the agenda. We're going to move the, our item, the Civic Club update item, all the way up to the front. Mr. Ballmer, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you for obliging me on that. I very much appreciate it. So, we've got, this is actually a repeat of what I said last month because we've not added anything new, but I just want to remind everybody who's watching so that they can attend as many of our fabulous events that we have planned as possible. So, first up is this upcoming Saturday, from nine in the morning until 12:00, we have our Arbor Day event that's happening over here in the Public Works Building. We'll have plants to trade there. There will be some amazing gardening experts that'll be present at the event, as well as we'll have some little snacks and refreshments for folks. So, this should be a fantastic time. If you're into gardening or any kind of plant type of thing, it's a fantastic event to come to. The next thing is not an event per se, but just a reminder that March 21st at 5:00 PM is the submission deadline for the Shenandoah Scholarship Program. On March 22nd, although the Public Works are actually doing the trash bash, we will be, Civic Club will be going around insisting anybody that needs help getting some of the bigger stuff up to the trash bash. We'll put that out on social media the week before. On March 29th, we'll be helping our amazing Shenandoah police, and I love seeing all of you back there. But anyways, that is at 11:00 AM at Wood Forest Stadium. We will be, Civic Club will be there passing out hot dogs and water and all kinds of refreshments there. And then, lastly, this is probably, I'm glad that Rich isn't here because this, I know it's his favorite event, but on April 12th is our Easter at the Park. That will be from 10:00 AM until 12:00 PM, and everybody should be happy to know that we are going back to the huge Easter egg hunt that we've done in the past. So, we will have 5,000 eggs for kids to track down that day. So, we will, for those listening, we'll make sure it's very publicly known, the event starts at 10:00, and we will kick off the actual Easter egg hunt where we'll, like, say, everybody mad scramble to go get the eggs at 10:15 promptly. So, if you don't come till 11:00, I can pretty much guarantee you those eggs are going to be long gone. Any questions for me?
We're not going to drop the Easter eggs out of the helicopter like we did the one year, are we?
Oh, I didn't know that we did that.
Bit of history.
I don't know.
We won't do it again.
We won't do that again. Charlie, did you ask for that? No.
That would be quite the event. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. How long ago was that?
It must have been like the first year I moved here. It's like, in my backyard, it's like, what the heck is that?
Well, if anybody watching has a spare helicopter, I would be up for entertaining. All right, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles.
Thanks, Charlie.
All right, we're going to move on to item number six, Recognition of Officers. Chief?
So, we're going to try to do this as efficiently as possible. So, Jake's going to be reading the awards and recognition, and I'll be handing the awards out.
Take your time, it's worth every bit of it.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for, to all the families, to everybody for joining us for this. Just logistics real quick. Officers, when we call you up, we'll do one picture up here with your award with the chief. We'll have you come to the back, and then we'll do a group photo at the end with everybody who's received recognition tonight. And then, after that's done, we'll move down back to our side of the building to do pictures with families. So, make sure we get everybody captured in there. So, first up, we are going to present two awards from the Texas Police Chiefs Association to two of our supervisors. So, in 2021, the TPCA started the Law Enforcement Command Officer Program, which is also known as LECCOP. And the concept of this program was to encourage and provide leadership development for Texas law enforcement up-and-comers for future command roles, and also to recognize individuals who work hard to prepare themselves for leadership roles in law enforcement. So, as part of this program, there's two tracks of training courses that are hosted by TPCA. The first is professional leadership development, the second is organizational health and integrity. So, there's 10 total courses that LECCOP recipients have to take, and once they complete that, they have to fill out an application with a recommendation from the chief of police that's also submitted to TPCA. So, in November, Sergeant McDuffie and Sergeant Pullen received awards number 105 and 107 in the state of Texas. So, that's how many LECCOP recipients there were up to that point since the start of 2021. So, they join Lieutenant Gordon and I now as the third and fourth LECCOP awardees for the Shenandoah Police Department. All right, next up, we're going to recognize somebody who has, actually, hang on, we need the award, chief. So, next up is somebody who has been a great partner to his shift, has had an outstanding attitude, excellent work ethic, and hit some significant milestones for patrol performance in 2024. This officer was first overall in misdemeanor arrests, DWI arrests, total arrests, traffic contacts, and average traffic contacts per shift. He finished second in the Patrol Division in self-initiated arrests and self-initiated contacts overall, and third in felony arrests. What's remarkable about this is this was all done in about eight months of work after being released from FTO, because he was just hired in January, went through training, and then was released shortly after that. Also, he was certified in December as a Drug Recognition Expert, which is a 152-hour course that's done in three phases. It's widely agreed upon to be one of the most difficult training courses in law enforcement, and he is one of only 18 in Montgomery County who hold that certification. So, our 2024 Patrol Officer of the Year goes to Officer David Dede. Our next award is something that we haven't done before, but this person was more than deserving of it. This is our Team Player Award for 2024. This individual received recognition from supervisors and peers for multiple patrol shifts covered. As y'all know, we have a minimum staffing requirement on patrol to make sure that our level of service stays where it needs to be, and we can cover calls for service for the city. And this individual covered more than anybody else consistently and has really done so since he started working for us. He is also a member of the Honor Guard and volunteered for multiple events, including the Public Safety Expo and the 50th Anniversary Celebration. Multiple compliments from criminal investigations for consistently working his investigations from start to finish, the initial report, following all leads, gathering all evidence, and filing his own warrants, which allows detectives to concentrate on other investigations. In 2024, he was second in Patrol Division for crash reports and residential traffic stops, which everybody appreciates, and third in misdemeanor arrests and self-initiated contacts. Okay, we have two service awards to issue. They are for very different reasons, but both these individuals contributed significantly to everything they did for us and continue to do. So, the first officer has stepped up, and even before he took a primary role, was playing a significant role in our social media efforts. All of y'all, I think, are following our Facebook page, which is critical to our outreach efforts and informing the public of things that we're doing and our citizens, and giving some transparency on that, and he's done a great job. He was instrumental in planning and communicating for the Veterans' Point Dedication Ceremony, also was a member of the Honor Guard, and attended multiple events, including assisting with a fallen Harris County Sheriff's Office Deputy Funeral in May of 2024. He has also taken a primary role as an instructor for defensive tactics and leads that program for us, and this is instrumental for making sure that our folks have the competency and the skills to use appropriate levels of force, which is very important for what we do. Okay, the second service award goes to somebody who does multiple things and fulfills multiple roles for our agency that are all critical to the support of what we do overall. Not as visible and not as seen as often as our patrol folks do, but not only does he assist with that, but he helps plan and primarily plans and executes city events, including National Night Out and our Public Safety Expo. He's a primary role player in our vehicle maintenance and repair operations to keep our fleet up and running. He does primarily is doing most of the school bus escorts in the neighborhood in the mornings during the school year, and everybody knows him and recognizes him. He's also in charge of sex offender compliance, assists with residential traffic enforcement efforts, tow truck and wrecker permitting and compliance, vacation watches, radar and LiDAR training and maintenance, equipment repairs and maintenance, like our radios and our computers in our cars, and also assists with patrol coverage, just to name a few things. So, he works very hard, he does the right thing, he has a desire to serve and to help, and we're very happy to have him onboard. Last up, we have two letters of commendation. Letters of commendation are awarded to employees for highly credible accomplishments, as to bring honor and recognition to them as an employee, the police department, and the police profession as a result of training, devotion to duty, or service to the public. So, the first officer in 2024 led all of our patrol in total shifts worked, which is significant because being here and being present is hard for a lot of folks with everything they have going on in their personal lives, and this person was at the top of the list for that. Led everybody in felony arrests, supplemental reports, which are follow-ups for investigations, and total reports written. Also, finished third in total arrests, initial incident reports and crash reports. Multiple compliments, again, from our criminal investigation for the quality of investigations, again, working those from start to finish, chasing the leads down, and filing their own warrants, keeping the detectives available to focus on what they're doing. And also, they take, takes a lead role on intelligence for our LPRs and updating that information. So, the first letter of commendation goes to Officer Jennifer Genovese. And our last award for the night is another letter of commendation. This officer recovered multiple stolen vehicles last year for the second consecutive year in a row, the most in the department. Also, another Honor Guard member, but this officer attended more events than anybody in the entire unit, including the same fallen Harris County deputy. And what's important about that is a lot of these come up on short notice. They're memorial events, funerals, you know, things that require you to make plans and be present within a couple days' notice. A lot of times on their days off, and so he had the flexibility to make that happen. He made a significant arrest in March of 2024 on a crew that was responsible for thousands of dollars in fraudulent transactions from Sam's Clubs all over the area and outside the area, and when they hit the one in Shenandoah, he got them. So, that was an awesome job. And this is my favorite part. So, he received a citizen compliment that same month from a stranded motorist who was a Vietnam vet in a moving lane of I-45, and he said that that experience for him, the gentleman who, the citizen who called in to compliment this officer, said that was scarier than fighting in the Vietnam War, being out in the middle of I-45 during rush hour traffic in a moving lane, trying not to get hit and trying to stay alive. So, he complimented this officer's patience, his quick response, and his professionalism. This is a baseline of who he is. We're very proud of him. This is, letter of commendation is for Officer David Sweattnum.
So, I'm going to say something additional along with this. So, what day was that, Jake? Monday? Monday, we received a call of an individual who was in desperate need, and he was going to end his life by jumping off the parking garage at the hospital. And Officer Sweattnum responded to that incident, and he, we watched his body cam video today, and he did an absolutely outstanding job of talking that guy down. It was fantastic, and we, very much.
Stay here, man. If we could, y'all, could we have everybody come up? We'll do a quick group photo, and then we'll move down to our side of the building and do some family photos for y'all.
I just want to say for the record how personally I'm so proud to have so many excellent police officers assigned to our department. We are very, very proud, and having had, having had that blue-lined blood running through my veins for 32 years, it makes me especially proud to see that these gentlemen and ladies are working hard to protect us.
Eric, if I can add to that for just one second, we have a very mature department, a very aging department. So, a lot of these guys, we don't have any young guys in this department. It's a very aging, very mature department. So, the decision-making level is at a high. So, it's phenomenal. I would like to show y'all that video one day. It's great.
Yes, most definitely, yeah. I don't like the word mature, more it's experienced. All right, let's move on to item number seven, Presentation of the Monthly Capital Project Report.
Okay, 30 minutes ago, MDD wrapped up. Again, we had no January meeting. We did approve requesting repayment of $500,000 from Water and Sewer back to MDD, who loaned it to Water and Sewer while they became financially independent. We approved releasing funds from the entry monument signs. It's about $20,000?
Twenty, twenty-one and five.
Okay, all right. About 20, okay. Approved recommendation from the MDD Board to request a joint meeting with council on June 11th. Hit down the project list here. On the main park, additional parking, did we complete the survey?
The surveying, yes, yes, and design is in progress.
I didn't ask that in the last meeting.
Sorry, I had survey, a different survey.
Different survey.
Not surveying.
Okay, yeah, the surveying, done, okay. They're getting close to completing the eastbound research for us at North Island-Grogan's merge lane, the curb, the turn lane, and I left out the sidewalk have been completed, and so their target completion is Q1, 2025. Wellman Road Drainage Project, I asked this earlier to Bill, then what difficulties are we having with Encompass?
They just haven't, they take weeks and weeks and months to respond to any email. That's what's happening now.
Okay. I've got the East Park Drainage, that's on hold pending Sam Moon and the PID. Redevelopment Zone, the property, the last property is for sale, so I don't know, do you have like a potential ETA bill for that one, Ballpark?
No, we don't, but we're not going to get any easement granted until that sale's complete.
Okay. The David Memorial at Hanema Intersection Improvements, our poles are going up, correct?
Yes.
All right, awesome. That should be done Q1?
The poles, once the poles are out of the way, then we look at the construction portion, it will be beyond Q1.
Okay, so we'll be updating that date. All right. The Monument Signs, that's the project that requested the funding back. IDC rework, we're making some progress. Bill, if you could just give a quick update again?
We've been kind of held up on the redevelopment zone, but right now, planning and zoning has moved on to Section 5, which has a lot of mechanical parts of the IDC, and we'll be tackling that. Probably, Jackie, it'll take two meetings, you think? And then, come back around, finish up the redevelopment zone, and then we'll be ready to start making presentations to City Council.
Okay. The long-awaited I-45 intersection improvements, I'm sure that they've done their scoping by now. Do they have a potential target date yet? Do we know anything?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, John.
Okay, we did have a meeting, a teams meeting today on that project, actually, earlier. So, it'll take TechStop, once they approve our plans, which we had to resubmit because they changed some of their requirements, it'll take them about four months to review and approve plans, three months to bid the project. So, we're seven months away from being in construction at the earliest.
Okay, so I guess the good news is they haven't merged with the Corps of Engineers, so they could go slower.
That's good news, yes, that's right. And we also have the funding that's funded by TechStop, so that's other good news.
All right, thanks, John. Wastewater Treatment Improvement Project, de-watering building is being prepped with a new rotary arm and press and blowers. The MCC installation switchboard is delayed until April. We're still collecting data for the utilities rate study, looking forward to seeing that. Pump covers, one cover completed, and the remaining six are in progress, should be done first quarter. Notice to proceed on the fire hydrant audit, also completion first quarter. And we are working on the RFP for additional design work for the Thornwood Lift Station pipe and recoding. For the ARPA project, it's getting there, okay? The CCN, the payment was completed. We're waiting PUC confirmation letter. I don't know exactly how long that will take, but...
I don't have any idea either.
Okay, all right. That was the major update for that. Any questions?
Thank you. We're going to move on to item number eight, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Park Signs and Posting Locations.
Chris, I do have some images in the Gennepack. Thank you. So, this was discussed last week, or sorry, two weeks ago at the last council meeting, and based on that conversation, we wanted to bring it back today to actually have the signs to look at that are currently posted at our parks, so that we... signs to look at that are currently posted at our parks, so that we can discuss where, if we want to add signage at our new parks, or if we want to modify it. Some of the conversation was regarding posting some signs where the vehicles enter at the parks. Currently, the signs that we have, which post the hours and the rules, are all located at pedestrian entrances. So they're pedestrian size, you can't see it from the vehicle. So what staff has, has brought for council for consideration is you've got each of the park rule signs in the packet here. Chris has one open now. And then at the very end of, after these three, I included an example of one of the signs that we use for, to identify how many laps it takes to certainly, to, to walk one mile. The idea being there that we could take that, that sign, if we want to do a larger sign at the vehicular entrances, we could use that shape and put on there park hours and maybe list a few key rules, no overnight parking, whatever council decides. So we just wanted all that information so council could discuss. And really, staff is looking for guidance on what locations you'd, you'd like signs added and what that language should be, so that we can, we can move forward. The actual cost of the signs won't, won't be that much. It can be handled out of the operating budget. Any questions or comments?
So now it's, so now it's three laps for a mile? The current one says two.
So this is for the Holly Hill Trails.
Oh, that's the Holly Hill Trails, okay.
Vision Park is two laps for a mile.
All right, thank you. Confused myself on that.
I just grabbed one, this is an example of what you can do with this. And we, if we do add this, we would like to keep the same style.
Yeah.
So that it flows well between all of the parks.
Was there any for the pool?
No, we don't have any signage at the pool, and we don't have any signage at Veterans Point, which some of the conversation at the last council meeting was maybe we don't want to limit hours at the Veterans Park because it's in the middle of our walking trail system, which is different than other parks, which are more of a destination. They're either at the end of a pathway, or they don't even have a pathway to them. The Veterans Park is different in that if you, if you say it's going to be closed at 10 and people are trying to walk laps or walk through that area because they're walking our pathways, maybe they'll have some concern that they're walking through a closed park.
Yeah. That's a good idea. Good. Any discussion on this?
The only thing that...
Your opinions?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Martin, the only thing that, I, I like this baller sign, and as far as making something visible for the drivers as they're entering to the park locations, would be the park hours and no overnight parking. Simple from, you know, in my opinion, is better than cluttering it.
I'll second that.
That, that makes sense to me. It gives you the most important information somebody driving needs to see. And then when they get out of their car, they'll see all of the other rules. No alcohol, no glass containers. Keep your hand, that's on a leash.
On the tighter park sign, you could put the no vehicles left overnight, like you've got on the main park. Add that to that.
So we could also add that to the Holly Hill Trails where there's a parking, there's a, a small parking lot there as well. And we could just post it so it's prominent as you pull into those, those spaces you see.
All you got to do is say it once.
You see the signs. Is there a desire to add signage like that at the city pool, parking?
And that's what started this whole thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right.
I would say yes.
It started this whole discussion, so that's, yeah.
For continuity.
It's, it's a sign we're talking about. If you want to, if council wants to do it, I have no objection to that. You know what I mean?
Okay.
I didn't think it was a crisis, that it, you know what I mean, that people were just trying to make a regulation. It's my, my point. Putting up a sign is totally different.
Okay.
Which it accomplishes.
So the final location discussed would be the Veterans Point. Would we put a, a sign there that says no overnight parking with hours? Do we not do, do that park in particular? What's council thoughts?
I wouldn't, I, I agree with you. I, I think it's, we shouldn't have one there. People are going to use that path. And they, if they're going to use the path, they're going to go right through the memorial, so.
I agree.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the motion is to approve what we just discussed. Right? Size, the size of the signs? And the locations?
So the sizing I put in there, I based that off of, and I put this in the agenda pack, it's going to be a one foot by two and a half foot. That's the recommended size for informational sign, according to the Texas Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices. They don't really regulate informational signs like this, but I figured if that matches up with what they call for a 20 mile an hour road, it'll be big enough. About two inch lettering should be plenty big for people to read as they drive in.
Is that part of TechStop?
It's, so TechStop uses that manual as well. It's based on a national manual, but they have different sizing requirements for different speeds.
I was going to say, why are they so good at documentation and not so good at doing?
All right. Do you have a motion?
Do you have a motion?
A second. We have a motion by Councilman Summerlin to approve, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, discussion of possible action to approve change order number two for the wastewater treatment plant project.
So this change order that you have before you is to repair a slide gate that was discovered to be inoperable after we had the channels drained to do the work that we needed for our expansion project. And looked at repairing it, but the recommendation for engineer was, let's just replace it completely. It's highly corroded. Because you, you need the slide gate to control the flow through those channels. The total cost of the change order is $24,086, and staff is recommending this approval of this change order.
I have a motion to approve this.
I'll, I'll move that we approve this change order.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Robinson.
Wait, I had one, I had one question. So this is within the contingency of the budget?
So it's, it's going to be a change order, so it would be, it's going to add...
You're going to need to go over the original budget.
Right. It's going to add 0.31% to the original contract.
All right.
0.31.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Brad. First I heard. Additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10. Discussion, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance declaring unopposed candidates in the May 3, 2025 city general election elected to office, canceling the general election, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
I'll move that we take that action, Mayor. Congratulations.
All right. We have a motion to, to declare unopposed, et cetera, by Councilman Robinson. Second?
I wholeheartedly second that one.
Seconded by Councilman Pollard.
I was wondering why you guys weren't jumping on that one, right?
I want to say congratulations, gentlemen. This is a, it, it says a lot about not being opposed. Happy to have you back on the dais. Any discussion?
How much did it save?
About $17,000?
Close to $20,000.
Saved $20,000 by keeping these people up here.
We can split it three ways.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 11. Discussion of possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance for the city of Shenandoah, Texas, suspending the rates proposed by CenterPoint Energy Resources doing business as CenterPoint Energy Entex and CenterPoint Energy Texas Gas. Company's gas reliability infrastructure program filing made with the city on February 18, 2025, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject and declaring an effective date.
Council, this is a step that we take annually as CenterPoint tries to recover some of the investment that they make in their infrastructure. And this is a, an interim rate adjustment that they're proposing. This ordinance would suspend the effective date of that rate adjustment for 45 days. After that time, the rate should take effect. And you can see in the agenda pack, the, the table that shows the, the impact on the end customer.
Yeah, it saves you money for 45 days unless the state jumps in, and it's been preliminarily approved by the state. But it'll save our residents a few bucks for 45 days.
All right. No motion? The motion by Councilman Brad? Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Robinson. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's four to one. Motion carries. Item number 12. Discussion of possible action to approve posting for the sale of one acre of city-owned property.
Council, this is located on the east side of 45, near a city-owned tract that we recently sold to DC Business Loans. They are interested in the remaining tract of city-owned property. It's located slightly east of the other tracts that they already own. By law, we have to post it out for public bid, so we can receive all bids. Feel free to jump in, Bill, if you have anything to add. We are not obligated to accept any of the bids.
Is there a map we could see?
I don't, it's, it's landlocked. It's right, kind of almost in the dead...
I think I have an idea where it is. I don't know if the public knows where that is.
Yeah. I don't have a, yeah, map.
Do you have one available, Chris?
I just read on, pull up maps. Can you pull up new maps, point it out?
I have a question while he's doing that, Bill. Since we have to publicly advertise this and receive bids, if we have multiple bidders and somebody bids a higher number than contractor or developer that was referenced in this today, that's no guarantee that that developer will...
That's correct.
Be able to buy it.
A couple of things, your question is excellent. It is possible we could get four, five, six bids for that property. And normally, we, unless something's unusual, we're going to sell it to the highest bidder. We have the property appraised, and if it does not sell or get a bid for at least the appraised value, staff will probably come back and recommend that no bids be accepted. We think this is the appropriate time to sell this tract. It, it's, it's out in the middle of, we don't have any access to streets or anything else. And this is, the price of that land is considerably higher than it was just three years ago. And if we don't sell it, it, it's possible that someone who wants it now might in a couple of years say, well, I've developed my property without it, I don't need it. And we'd be stuck with it. So staff has looked at it. We think this is a good time to, to sell it, if we can get the right price.
Are you able to pull maps up?
We're trying to pull it up on MCAD.
That's, I think it's, yeah, this is it.
Yeah, that's it.
It's 47352?
Yes. And DC, DC Business owns this one, this one, this one.
Which numbers are the four?
Three fifty, the numbers, 351, 353, 354 are owned by DC. And 352 is the city-owned property.
And then one of these is where the, the planned lift station is, is going to be located?
That is correct. The lift station will be on our property and the buyer will be notified that, that we have an easement in the lift station on the property.
All right. Does that answer?
Yes.
Motion to approve posting the sale of that one acre of property?
We have a motion to approve the posting of the sale of the one acre of property by Councilman Brad, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for pulling that up. Item 13. Final report on public hearing regarding the special use permit for mixed beverage retail permit on premise with late hours for Pluckers Shenandoah LLC located at 151 David Vetter Boulevard, Shenandoah, Texas.
Mayor, council, as read in the agenda pack, Pluckers has requested a mixed beverage permit for on-premise consumption with late hours for their location at the intersection of I-45 and David Vetter. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed their request and unanimously recommends approval of the permit with late hours.
Does this mean that we're moving forward on developing that property?
I am happy to report we are moving forward. We issued permits out late last week for both the site and the building work.
Great.
About how long will it take for that, do you think?
Yeah, so the site is heavily vegetated, so it's going to extend it a little bit on their, their typical build time. But they did advise we're looking at opening first quarter next year.
Wow, great. All right. We're going to open up a public hearing on this item. The time is 7:25. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? There's no one here to speak on this item. We're going to close the public hearing at 7:26. Discussion of possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas, amending the code of ordinances, Chapter 102, granting a special use permit for a mixed beverage on-premise permit with late hours for Pluckers Shenandoah LLC located at 151 David Vetter Boulevard, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, providing severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve our Councilman Raymaker, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion?
It's not close to any residential area, so we already have extended hours in that area.
Is there any word on, on the rest of the property?
No, sir, not at this time.
And we, we still haven't heard from that developer.
I had on my to-do list today to check. We had, in the last amended PDD, set a deadline for them to do something, and it's close to now. Unfortunately, I didn't, didn't reach that item on my to-do list, but I should next week, and we'll be able to tell you what that date is.
All right. Any additional discussion?
It's not just a regular chicken place. This, this place is big. It's a real big time addition to our community. And they're really a restaurant first and whatever else it is that they go for is second. So this is going to be great for our city, better than virtually any new thing that could come in right now.
That's good. I'm looking forward to that. All right. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, discussion regarding the presentation of agenda items. Discussion only.
Councilman Raymaker asked to put this on the agenda as a discussion item, to consider some agenda items at, over the course of two meetings to allow more time for discussion. And these would be non-time-sensitive items, so in other words, we cannot postpone the award of a contract, or we can't postpone something that has a, a public notice advertised, a public hearing advertised. So otherwise, I'll let Councilman Raymaker, if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, just similar to the item that we were just looking at, where, okay, public did not get any chance to see the map in advance, and we're moving forward and approving it, just, just to allow residents to be able to see things. And typically then for us, for most of these items, we only get four or five days to look at them. It's a limited amount of time to do research and come up with questions and get back to you guys. And so what I was looking for was like, well, what's the list of exceptions? I mean, you had mentioned, you know, budgeted vehicles that, okay, now the vehicle's available and we want it, want to move on it right away, emergency expenditures. But I was just looking for the ideas of what would be the exceptions to not have two meetings review on these.
Yeah, and the example that you give of vehicles, in, more in particular, police vehicles, because they are in short supply, we, we don't want to lose time ideally discussing them for too long, because then we lose the vehicles.
And we've already, and we've already budgeted for them.
Correct. They're, they're budgeted, so we need to, if they're in the budget, we need to get them when we can.
I just want to get away from rushing through things where it's like, okay, we found the map tonight, so, okay, we can approve it, but ideally, it'd be nice if residents had more time to see things.
And my thoughts are that if, that the agenda item needs some thought or some discussion rather than just, you know, I think we should, the budget amendment is a good, you know what I mean?
And let me all-
Stop like that, you know what I mean?
Excuse me, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's all right.
Let me also add that counsel always has the option to discuss an item and table it and not act. That has happened now and then here lately. So the option to discuss something longer is always there.
And also, all of us get in touch with the people at the city before these meetings anyway to investigate, or we wouldn't be here. I mean, that's our job, to go in and dig in and find out.
And we're always happy to help answer questions, provide more information.
But doesn't have the time for the public to do that. So while we're looking at things, the public doesn't get a chance to review things and ask questions, and that we could use more time for.
Well, if, if there's a consensus with counsel to do this, I guess we would need some guidance on which items those would be.
Like, that's why we're looking for the exceptions. It would be everything except for the exceptions.
Disagree. I, I, I feel that, that when, when these items come up for, to, to be put on the agenda, they are scrutinized and prepared to provide as much information to, to, to you all, the decision-makers, and ones who are going to cast the vote. And if there isn't enough information, there's still time to reach out to whoever is the signator on the, on the informational page of that particular item number. I don't like to see, you know, these items being delayed unnecessarily. I mean, okay, this was a, a one-off here that we didn't have a map prepared for this.
And we, we found it quickly, so it was-
But, and I agree that some, some require deliberation, and if there's some additional information before deliberation, and at that point, you can always ask, can we, can we postpone this to the next meeting so we can digest this a little further and make a proper decision? There's always that option there. I just don't want to make it a routine thing. Now, what, if these things are going to be one-off, we can deal with them as they come up by just simply requesting to put, to table it or to postpone it to another item.
So I, I think then if, if, if counsel feels that the item needs to be tabled, then I guess we'll do that.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from, from some of our new guys, you know, Frank, what are you, what are you thinking about the additional time? Joe, what are you thinking about the additional time?
What I think is that's a very good way to handle that. There are times when tabling something makes sense, and you want to have more information, you want to do more digging, that's, that's how you handle that.
I'm not the new guy. I guess I am too. I'm newer than some of you. But I don't want to get involved in, in too much analysis paralysis. And in, in business world, I've been, been involved with people that, that do the analysis paralysis, and it just cripples an organization, and we don't want to do that here.
Being the new guy, this is my first rodeo. And so, you know, when talking about looking at some of the items that are on the agenda, my coming up to speed and finding out, you know, first of all, identifying the information and reading through the information, I know that we're paying our profession, our, you know, those in the positions of their responsibility, we're paying them to give us the best information. And while having that understanding, it is also our responsibility, my responsibility, to make the best decision on that for the citizens of Shenandoah. And so for me, in one sense of it, I'm trying to come up to speed and make sure that I'm making the best decision on the information I have. And there are moments where I feel like I can't get to one of y'all, you know, to ask the question to get clarification, because I haven't necessarily format, you know, formed the question that I have for you about those things. So I'm going through a learning curve on that. So I lean towards, you know, extending some items or for further discussion. Saying that, understanding that we have the ability to table it and for further, you know, discussion, you know, I'm, I'm all for maintaining the status quo that we have and putting things on the agenda with that caveat of saying, if I need further information, it's not because I don't want it done, it's just I need more information to make the best discussion, the best decision for our citizens.
And that, and that option is always there. It's always there.
But that option's up for vote, too.
Yeah. Well, we, but we all, I mean, we're all, you know, sensible members of, of the council that we, we'll understand if, if he's not up to speed on a project that was started two years ago or a year ago, and he needs to get more information, of course, we'll all say, yeah, of course, you know? And if it's not time-sensitive, like it was discussed earlier, then, you know, we can, you know, we can deal with that as well.
And as the new guy, though, it's easy to get run over.
You're not going to-
I don't think-
No way.
I don't know.
I do think, I do think it's a-
Let's say overwhelmed.
Councilman Summerlin, and just to remind us all that we have a great staff here. We can reach out to them anytime when you need additional information. They're always available and always willing to answer those questions. That's been my experience.
Yeah, just to echo what you just said is that absolutely, that's the thing that I've found, that being on council at this moment with this city and dealing with the quality of leadership that we have in different departments, I have never had anyone say, I can't get to you. And they definitely have always extended themselves in providing the information that I need, and it's just me formulating the best question.
Absolutely. And we all want to make the right decisions for, for our city and for our residents, so that's, it's, that's understandable. But again, to ease your mind, you know, that option's always open for anyone who, who needs more information. All right. Any additional discussion? All right, we're going to move on to item sixteen. Discussion on possible action to form a committee to discuss traffic concerns.
And this kind of falls on me that I-
That falls on the new guy.
It falls on the new guy. What I want to just say about this committee that I'm wanting to follow, to put together is the committee will discuss the introduction of traffic calming technologies. The discussion is focused on the valley and wellmen due to numerous traffic violations and reports of concerns. So we're, we're putting together, getting together, it's not going to be a huge group, but it's only going to be focused on this, so it's not going to be a format to bring up any other things. So we're getting this put together and hope to have this done soon if we can get it approved.
What did you have in mind for small?
Say it again.
What did you have in mind for small?
A number of-
About five people. Because I know that there's a lot of analytical things, and so.
We have a motion to-
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the formal committee to discuss traffic concerns by Councilman Brad.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Councilman Robinson. Any additional discussion?
Great idea. I've got a couple of suggestions of citizens that have brought some things to me that they could bring some value to your committee.
Absolutely.
So you're going to be the second councilman on there? We, committee usually has two, two councilmen.
Oh, does it? Oh, okay. I did. It's my first year, yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, discussion on possible action regarding design proposal for LEAF Engineering for HVAC replacement project at City Hall.
Mayor and counsel, as promised, LEAF Engineering was able to get us their design proposal, and the proposal cost was ninety-five thousand, sorry, yeah, ninety-five thousand dollars. We had a hundred thousand budgeted for these services, so they fell within our budget number. Staff is recommending approval of these design services to LEAF Engineering.
All right. Motion?
Wait, this is specifically for the design work, correct?
Yes.
And how long will it take them, how long will it take them to come up with something that can be bid?
So they'll, they'll have, we talked to them about that, because we told them our timeline that we have. They said within a, a month, two, they could have a good, their head wrapped around a good cost estimate for construction to bring the budget.
Are they going to also do the construction, or is that going to get bid out?
So that would be bid out separately. They would, however, do the construction administration, which is included in this design services proposal.
So they'd be doing the project management?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It wasn't clear, because I was looking in, there's like, what's, starting to talk about build and, just wanted to make sure.
Right. We, we sat down with them to determine, to develop a scope, just to give them an idea of where to get started. Obviously, the details will be formed during the design process. We're going to be meeting, they'll be meeting with not only us, the staff, but also our maintenance company, Total Air.
Looks like with forty weeks of construction phase, you're going to still have another chilly winter left in you guys.
Unfortunately.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
A motion to accept.
Second. We have a motion to accept the design proposal by Councilman Summerlin, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any additional discussion?
This is a, this is fixing the problem. It's not a giant Band-Aid, right?
Correct. Yes, this is fixing, fixing the Frankenstein we got thirteen years ago.
Once and for all.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen, discussion on possible action to adopt the minutes of the January eighth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting.
Motion to be approved is read.
We have a motion to approve as read by Councilman Brad.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, discussion on possible action to ratify the accounts payable for January twenty-twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Summerlin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a discussion? Do we have discussion?
Sure.
Okay, I, I just have a question. On administration, there is two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for appraisal Joston Road and Tamina, what? Can you remind me what they are?
That's the appraisal on the piece of property we just agreed to put up for sale.
And the other question I had was for technology, there's thirty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars for Freet Data Solutions. What is that?
Those were, that was in addition to our CrowdStrike contract. Because of CEDIS requirements, we had to basically cancel the contract and create a new contract, and that was the difference in the cost of the old and the new contract. If you want more, more detailed information on that, come see me.
I could, I could remember what that was, and I'll, I'll just check.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Administrator Updates.
Gentlemen, I have just a few for you. First of all, the Houston Galveston Area Council has multiple subcommittees, and recently the mayor was appointed to the Transportation Planning Committee, and I was appointed to the Transportation Advisory Committee. Judge Kio nominated both of us, and then it was voted on, and we were, we are now a, a part of those committees, so we look forward to making a contribution at HVAC however we can.
Wow, that's great.
Secondly, the, about two, three weeks ago, the mayor convened the staff in, in this council chambers here. He requested the full staff, and of course, not every single staff member could make it, but the majority were able to. And the purpose was for the mayor to recognize and thank the staff that we have for the jobs that they do. And I can tell you, having been here almost eighteen years, this is the best team across the board that we've had. And most of the people that I work with on a day-to-day basis are in this room, and I am grateful for them every day because they, I can't do my job without them. But just to add to that, every single position here in this city is important. The city can't operate without every person here, without every job position here. So I just wanted to add to the mayor's recognition and also to thank him for doing that, because everybody like, as you saw tonight with the police department, everybody likes to be recognized for their hard work and their accomplishments. So I want to also thank, I know that there's only a few of you here that are hearing this right now, but I know some other staff members watched the meeting, I want to also thank the outstanding staff that we have at this city. And last but not least, I'd like to show our latest video. You'll see some familiar faces.
In Shenandoah, we value being prepared in any scenario, so today we'll cover essential steps for preparing for hurricanes, flooding, and winter weather emergencies. In any given year, hurricane season is between June first and November thirtieth. During this time, we can experience unexpected flooding and damage, so for you and your family to stay safe, here's how you need to prepare. Make sure you have flashlights and extra batteries on hand in case of power outages. Prepare for at least a three-day supply of food and water for each member of the family. Stay informed about local evacuation routes. Plan in advance to stay with family, friends, or at a hotel outside the path of the storm if evacuation is necessary. Keep your gas tank full in case of an evacuation. Make sure your generator is ready to go if needed. Check your prescriptions and have a supply on hand. Don't forget to include food, water, and any necessary medications for your pets. And if you encounter high water, turn around, don't drown. You should contact your city if your water is off or there are trees blocking public roadways. However, please do not report trees that have fallen on your own property. Instead, call a tree service company. And please contact your electricity and gas providers for outages or line breaks. The city does not take care of these utilities. For any other non-urgent matter, call our main number or visit our website. When winter weather strikes, freezing becomes an issue. Here's how to prepare for winter-
Thank you again to the Pird family.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. All right, let's move to council inquiry. Councilman Raymaker.
Okay, I wanted to say thanks for getting those online check postings updated, online as requested. This past week, we saw some, Joseph, putting cages on some of the city-owned sprinkler systems. Could you just kind of explain what that was about then? I mean, we hadn't had them for years, so what precipitated that?
Well, just because of the thefts that are in the area, and in particular, is the scrap volume of brass goes up. You're going to see more thefts, so it acts as a deterrent to keep.
Have we had any thefts, though? I'm just curious.
We have not had any. We're hoping to keep it that way. It's a deterrent. You just want to make your target more difficult to get to, so somebody goes somewhere else.
Chief, I saw in your update, you had an update on the drones, and I was just curious about the target dates for the written directives, when the training might be done and when they might actually be going into service.
So it's, it's pretty complex. It takes a lot to put together a program like this, so we can expect it to be up within the second quarter of the year.
You say this year, second quarter?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so operation of this year by mid-year?
Yes.
All right. All right, a couple of the items that I had, Lisa, where are we at with our transparency stars?
So there's only three remaining that we still need or eligible for, not need, but eligible for.
I know they created two new ones for us.
So they created, so the economic development one was always not obtainable, because we do not have an economic development corporation. However, I guess enough people, including myself, have complained about it. So they extended it to MDDs and any other, any other economic tools. So like, as a city, we could do 380 agreements. So that opens up the possibility for us to have that star. We don't have any data, obviously, because we don't have any economic development agreements right now, but I did set up the page. It's under review. There were some comments. I fixed what they wanted, and then I sent it back for review. I haven't heard back yet. There was one, that new star that was created, was called Open Government. It's on the financial transparency page. It basically takes all the information from the P&amp;Z, the MDD, and the council land-in pages and combines it into one. And then it's just to promote transparency and communication and median information to the public. That we were, we're at the star. I haven't brought it to council, because I was waiting for the economic development, just to try to do them both at once. The procurement and contract one, that one's a little tense. Kristin and me have, we've tried to attempt it, and then other things come up, so we're back on that one again. So we're hoping to get that at least finalized by the end of next month. If not, it'll probably be April. So that's kind of where we're at on those, and then at that point, we would have all the stars.
Perfect.
We have a constellation.
And as long as you're talking, then, I asked earlier about the water and sewer cash flow.
Yeah, so we, yesterday, just to give you guys, everyone to keep updated, we had our audit committee meet in with Councilmember Raymaker and Councilmember Charlie Brott. It went well. We got all of our adjusted general entries, so Kristin has made those, and we will be updating the cash flow appropriately with those changes, so.
And then I had some outstanding things that I had asked for before. The TACAS contract, I think you said that there wasn't any additional threshold to meet, but I had asked for the contract to be sent to all the councilmen who are new.
Oh, I must have overlooked that. I'll send that out.
And the five- and ten-year CIP broken out by fund source, so a separate tab in the spreadsheet for each funding source. So water and sewer, general fund.
Okay, I thought we discussed that. So staff doesn't need the information that way? I provided you what we have.
Yeah, I know. It makes it easier for council, though, if we do it that way. Not everybody understands the flow of the funds.
Okay, I mean, they are broken out by each division on the existing CIP. You've got the water sewer projects, you've got roads, storm.
I know, when you put it into a column format, it just works out a lot easier to sum up what I've got to spend.
So typically, in the past, we've color-coded some things. That might be a better option.
Yeah, but it's all on one page, and so getting those separate breakdowns is more difficult. I've always had to break them out on my own.
Yeah, there's some projects, too, that are either eligible for MDD and general funds. That's another thing. So you would have duplication of tabs.
There's a separate column built into it, because we've got the three funding sources, and one of the funding sources can overlap the general fund, and that's the MDD, so.
Let's have those maintenance discussions offline.
Yeah, we can brainstorm.
All right, that's all I had then. The only thing that I have is something I meant to do when the officers were all here. Chief, if you can just convey this to them and their families, first of all, thank them for choosing their careers. And also, thank you to the families that are there to support their spouse or whoever's in their home.
Definitely, thank you. Being a spouse of a law enforcement officer is definitely the hardest job.
Councilman Pollard.
Well, I have a special shout-out to Community Impact Newspaper. I really appreciate the coverage that you give to Shenandoah. Especially appreciate the significant story that you all wrote in the last few weeks about Shenandoah preparing for the growth in this city, having a police department that's geared up to address any growth that we have. Appreciate the recognition for the expansion of our entertainment venues that are here. We're becoming an entertainment hub of the woodlands now. But really appreciate what you do professionally, day in and day out. It's a great, great organization. And I'd also like to say that one of the reasons that we're getting the kind of coverage like that is because we have leaders in this community, in the Shenandoah community, that have brought the Shenandoah label up, the brand up significantly. Kathy, thank you for serving and working hard, especially going through the leadership Montgomery County and hitting a real high profile for Shenandoah. And I'm really especially am proud of our mayor, who continues to take a real leadership role in virtually everything. And the image of Shenandoah is the best it has ever been. We're very proud of Tamina, very, very proud of Tamina, and that story promoted that. And our mayor has really made that a top priority, as he said in this presentation that he made at the Economic Development Conference last week, week before last, that Tamina is one of the two major projects that we are so focused on and proud of. Thank you, Mayor. We're so lucky to have you here.
Thank you, thank you. It means a lot to me. Thank you. Councilman Brott?
I'm good.
Councilman Robinson?
I'm good.
I don't have anything to add, other than congratulations to all the ladies and gentlemen in blue. You guys are doing a great job. You talk about leadership. We've got two of the best leaders right here, leading our department. Thank you both. Thank you, Chief. Okay, it's 7:57. We're going to move on to executive session. We're going to recess, according to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code. Birds of Texas Code are annotated. In accordance with the authority contained in the government code, it follows Texas 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Concluded the executive session at 8:11 PM. No action or decision or vote with regard to any matter considered in the closed meeting was made during the closed meeting. The time is 8:13. And at this time, we're going to adjourn this regular session of the city council meeting. It's 8:13.